Brian, I didn't see the video, but I'm assuming it ran. So we're gonna go ahead and begin. If that's okay. So everyone, welcome to tonight's city council meeting, April 13th, 2020. And yes, we are doing our first council meeting here remotely for all the obvious reasons due to the coronavirus. And happy to report that we, it looks like we have all council members here present. But so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to the, to order. And we will begin first with an invocation. And Mr. Jones, if you can help us with that invocation, and then we'll, we will follow with a, a pledge. And we'll, everyone envision where your flag will be. But first, we'll, we'll begin with our invocation, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Okay, let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for bringing us all here together, virtually. We thank you for the meeting of the Easter weekend that we've just celebrated. We thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We remember all those that are suffering due to the, to the coronavirus. And we thank you all for all the citizens of Homewood and all the care they've shared for each other. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. And so with that, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and do a pledge. And everyone face whatever flag you can face. And I'll begin. I pledge allegiance All right. That was about as choppy as it could be.
Beautiful.
It was beautiful.
That is the smoothest group, the smoothest group together I've heard for a while. Good job.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, we will, we'll call tonight's meeting to order, and we'll begin with roll call. Ms. Melody?
Yes, Mr. Waltney? Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Hickambottom?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton? I thought Mr. Wolverton was here. Is he not?
He was here a second ago.
He is here.
Okay. We'll come back to him. Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Dr. Jones is in the house?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Ms. Andreas?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
President Wright?
Here.
Okay, so are we missing Mr. Waltney? And Wolver-
It says he's on here.
There's Mr. Waltney.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, what about Mr. Wolverton?
He was here earlier.
He was here. He may have, he may be having a connectivity issue. As soon as I, as soon as I see him come back up, I'll pop him in.
Okay, I'll mark you, I'll mark Wolverton absent for roll call, but then let me know if he pops back up. So you have a quorum. You just have one absent.
All right. Thank you, Melody. So we'll begin. Melody did send out some minutes from our meeting for March 30, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
That's by Mr. McCluskey, second by Mrs. Smith. And you guys try to identify yourselves a little bit so I can see, but I got you there. McCluskey and Smith, all in favor. All right. So that's gonna pass unanimous, Ms. Melody. And just for everyone to know, we will go ahead and continue to do voice votes in this virtual world we're living in. And that will be, certainly if there's any question about any of the votes, I'll be paying particular attention to any, hey, we shouldn't have, you know, well, you never say never, but we shouldn't have much issue with tonight's meeting. But, but I'm gonna continue to try to do the voice votes, as awkward as it may be. And then if we have to follow up with roll call votes where needed, we will. So just wanna let everyone know that. And also, one other note in our virtual world, it's hard for me to keep up with a chat page and raising your hand and what have you on this, on a computer screen. So you all just are gonna, just kinda have to chime in where you can. You know, may I speak? May I speak? Or something along those lines. I will continue to try to recognize everyone. Alex made it look so much easier the other night. And so I will do the best we can to try to recognize you all as we, we go through the meeting. All right. So next item is gonna be our board vacancies and appointments. And Melody, I think we'll, we're gonna pass on those. We don't have any of those tonight. And we can discuss some of those perhaps for an end.
Hey, just for clarification's sake, on that vote for minutes, Wolverton did not vote on that, correct? It was 10 to 0?
That's correct. And let me double check here.
He's not, he's still not here?
Yeah, I still do not see him here. So that would have been a 10 to 0 vote. Thank you. Sorry to clarify that. And Andrew, if you chime in, I mean, if you come in, let us know so that we'll, we'll recognize your presence and your votes going forward. All right. So no actions on board vacancies or appointments. We do have one addition to the agenda tonight, which is gonna be 040420, which is gonna be request for consideration to work in the city right of way on Highland and Irving, and then alley adjacent to the Sims Garden. That's coming to us from Mr. Thames. And we will put that in other new business tonight. So that's gonna be the only amendment to tonight's rather short agenda. And with that change, I will entertain a vote for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second, John Harden.
All right, that's Mr. Jones moved to approve. A second by Mr. Harden. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. So that's, it looks like Mr. Wolverton did join us for that one. Melody, so I'm gonna count him present, if you can do that, and 11 to 0 vote to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Yes, sir.
You got that? Okay. And that will get us into our consent agenda. Where we have, let's see, three or four items on paper here. It's like we have three items on our consent agenda. All public hearings, which we had previously announced and noticed to the public, were gonna be carried over until all May meetings at the earliest. And so with, with that caveat, I will ask for a motion for approval of the-
President Wright, before you get, make the, before you get the motion in a second, Mr. Kendrick had said we needed to make sure we let the public know about 120320, that it was supposed to be a public hearing tonight that's scheduled for May 11th.
Okay. Well, we will make specific note of that, that it, there was a public hearing that was set for April 13th tonight for consideration to rezone property at 2927 Central Avenue. That is gonna be carried over until May 11th, along with the, the other public hearings. And we will at least be more adept at dealing with these virtual meetings, assuming they're still going on in May. And we will do our best to let the public participate in all respects as best as they can, as we can allow them to come May. But for purposes of tonight, we're gonna carry over those public hearings until May 11th. And so with that, I will again ask for, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thames.
Barry.
And a second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. So the consent agenda is approved as amended. And Melody, that have 11 to 0 vote on that. All right. And that gets us into our old business agenda. First item tonight is 050320, which is a request for consideration of reimbursement for pump rental and property repair costs related to flooding at 2832 Linden Avenue. This came to us from Mark in Darby Westfall with Hummingbird Properties LLC, and Wyatt Pugh and Greg Cobb with our BZ department. I know this has been discussed in committee and at our previous meeting, and that has already been reported out from finance. And so I know we, we have some more discussion to go on this. And before, open it for discussion, and I'm not positive I saw him, is Greg Cobb with us?
Peter, I've got a quick update. Greg is not with us. He said if we needed him, that we could call him on the phone. But he and I and Wyatt were just at another, at the Malaga Bonita House discussing. And I, and Greg was with Mark Westfall last night. Greg drove by at 11 o'clock last night to check on caveat. And sure enough, Mark was there with the pump, pumping. And he, I asked Greg what the status was of clearing out the pipe. And he said they had not quite gotten to where they needed to be, that, you know, had this happened a few days ago, that they would have made it all the way to where the obstruction is, but they hadn't gotten there yet. So, you know, Mark was there again last night with the pump pumping. So he said we do need him to give him a call on the phone. But that, that's his update from today and last night.
I did go by there last weekend when I was riding my bike around downtown Homewood. And it's clearly that he's got a little kind of a, I call it a ditch on one side, a small swale, that if he can get the water to go into that, then it would go, I mean, we gotta clean out the pipe. But I think the problem can be solved pretty easily, I think, without a lot of money. If he can just get everything, the water going to that little swale, then it'll go down into, into our drain. All right. But it's a flat lot. It's definitely low and flat.
All right. And that may pertain to future repair going forward. And, and it sounds like, which may go somewhat to the question at hand, which is the reimbursement for the pump rental and the property repaired to date. So Jennifer, if I'm understanding, and so sound like best thing to do is to carry this over into our next meeting?
Yeah, he has not resolved the obstruction issue. And, and that's, that's, that's what we're waiting to see is if what he does solves his problem. But I, I do feel like we need to do some sort of help with the pump. But that's not to make a motion right now.
All right, gotcha. All right. So without further, I don't have anyone else any more comments on that. Without objection, then we will carry that item over. And I'm not hearing from anyone. So I won't go ahead and carry that item over for our next meeting, which will get us to our committee referral agenda. And we have one item under committee referral. And as you can see, and so without, I will entertain a motion to approve the tonight's committee referral agenda.
So moved. Andy.
Second, Britt Thames.
All right. So it's a move for approval by Mr. Waltney and a second by Mr. Thames. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. So-
A question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wright?
Where, where is that going? What committee is that? Well, I was looking at that.
I'm sorry, I forgot to put it, it should go to special issues, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's the right of way.
That's not Public Works? Okay. If you say special issues, that's fine.
All right. Well, that's fine. Well, well, since Barry's so used to seeing those, we'll let it go to their special issues committee. Thank you for catching that, Walter. I was looking at it. And I was moving on. I said, well, must be in there somewhere. So that will be referred to special issues.
I got thrown off only having one committee referral item because we normally never have that much. And just a reminder too, that we still have committee referral items from the 30th meeting because we just haven't held committee meetings yet.
Right. And we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna take that up come May as to how we're gonna handle that in some respects. So thank you for that, Melody. All right. So that's gonna get us to our other new business items. And just to be clear, we did take a vote on that committee referral, and that was approved, Melody.
Yeah.
Waltney Thames, 11 to 0 is what I got.
Correct. All right. So other new business, 020420, request authorize the mayor to sign letter to Aldo requesting to implement phased construction of Greenway 2 project to segment one half of the trail into future construction due to limited funding and increased construction cost. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to this or not. I assume this is a letter to request us phasing this construction project, just because of spreading out the funding. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that.
Well, President Wright, I don't know if Wyatt Pugh's dialed in, but he brought a letter for the mayor to sign that was on his letterhead, but it was to Jarvis Leonard. But y'all had not voted to do this yet. I think, I think two or three council members asked him to write it. But anyway, if he, if he's here, he can speak to it. But he was wanting the mayor to sign this letter.
He's on here.
I am here, Melody.
Okay.
Mr. Pugh?
Yes, yes. It's a letter, just simply requesting that we remove that one portion of the Greenway that we're gonna move to a different, a different phase. We're gonna fund it separately. That's, that's what we're requesting to do. And just to be on the safe side, we thought we'd run it, run it by council first before we ask the mayor to sign on for it.
And it's really just that, that, that's that final little loop is all it is. It's really, yeah, it's, that half should say half mile, right? That should be half mile.
That's correct.
Half of that.
Yeah. And let me just mention, you all have already discussed the, the doing of this. This is just, we're just, just running it by you so that you understand we're gonna have the mayor sign a letter.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Anyone else wish to speak to this? All right. Mr. Kendrick?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. All right. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'm moved to approve, Jennifer.
Second, Britt.
Second by, all right. So motion for approval by Ms. Andrews, second by Mr. Thames. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That will pass by 11 to 0 vote, Melody. And-
Is that a resolution?
Yeah, 2060, you're right, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes.
2060, yeah.
Got it. So resolution 2060. And that will get us to our, let me just double check that here. All right. Thank you. That'll get us started. Next item, 030420, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of March 31, 2020 through April 10, 2020. And Mrs. Smith, did you have those honors again?
I did.
Before she, before she starts, I just want to publicly, well, within, within, I want to thank her for continuing to do the vouchers into the new quarter. It's, it's Mr. Harden's turn, but we're going to give him a little break until we can, you know, do a little more training for him. So I want to thank Mrs. Smith-
Thank you.
-for her service and continuing to do this. So thank you.
Barry, if you need a, if you need a week off, let me know. I'm happy to come in there, help out.
I will. It's actually been really easy. And I'm kinda actually enjoying just getting out of my house. I have an excuse to leave my house. So that's a, a nice thing.
Hey, Ms. Smith-
That's why I offered to help.
Ms. Smith, I was gonna tell you, when you talked about the disinfectant, we got that from Trust. They actually are offering it right now. We got that tray in several places. It's the hospital grade disinfectant.
I've been spraying it all over the place.
Yeah.
The best part of all about this, Barry, is when you get to make sure John Harden pays you back when your time-
That's right.
Very grateful, but I'm happy to go in there. Happy.
He totally owes me.
All right. So Barry, I'll let you speak to it.
Yeah, it was, it was actually a really easy run. And I just had a couple of tiny questions, three to be exact. And Robert gave me my answers. And so I would move to approve the vouchers for the period as noted.
All right. So a motion for approval by Mrs. Smith.
Second, McCluskey.
Second by Mr. McCluskey. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the vouchers are approved through April 10, 2020. That gets us to our last item on our agenda, which we added for tonight, which is a request for consideration to work in city right of way and Highland Irving, the alley there adjacent to Sims Garden. And this came to us from Mr. Thames. Do you want to speak to this, Mr. Thames? I think we know what this is about, but I'll let you remind us.
Yes, sir. There, we had a public hearing scheduled for March 30. As everybody will recall, the applicant is wanting the city to vacate the alley to them so they can do some remediation with stormwater and some landscaping and things like that. And in the process, this will help Sims Garden as it's immediately adjacent to the Sims Garden, that a lot of that water is running onto. Just given the delay in the public hearing, not knowing when that's going to occur, I told them that if we approved them to work in the right of way, they could do that, as long as all the appropriate indemnification agreements were signed. Obviously, that does not mean the alley is vacated to them yet. However, all the adjacent property owners have already signed off their approval to have the alley vacated. So I think they feel pretty confident that ultimately we will get that done. But they'd like to go ahead and start. And after last night, it's probably a project that needs to get started sooner rather than later.
I would think so. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. So I'll take that for a motion for approval by Mr. Thames. Do I have a second?
Second.
Andy Waltney.
Second by Mr. Waltney. Any further questions or discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that's gonna be approval, 11 to 0, resolution 2061. And yes, ladies and gentlemen-
62, Mr. Wright, because the vouchers were 61.
Oh, you're right. Well, I'm just 0 for 3, Tara. All right. Thank you. 2063. Thank you, Melody. All right. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. Believe it or not, enjoy it while you can. And that'll bring us to our announcements and comments. Mr. Mayor.
I don't think he's here.
He was here earlier.
He is. We just can't hear him.
Let's see, if I can find him here. I see you, Mr. Mayor. Can you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got it. Mayor, go ahead.
Good. So just wanted to report to the council. Yesterday, the Jefferson County EMA had requested some help with the straight line winds that came through. So I did authorize the use of a skid steer, which they had requested. Our fire department went out to help out in Dora. Y'all may have seen that on TV. But, and then last night, just a big thanks to our, our police and fire from about 10 to 12, they were, they were really busy with some freeze down and a lot of flooding. So kudos to them. And then I've really only had one or two, I guess, real points on Lake Shore Trail. I don't know if y'all have or not, just on social distancing, but not enough. I think for the most part, unless y'all tell me otherwise, I think for the most part, everybody's doing a really good job.
All right. Thank you.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your relationship with all these announcements and orders and helping us shuttle through this, this difficult process, these difficult times. So appreciate that. All right. We'll begin with announcements with council members. And I'm gonna try to remember everyone. I'm gonna visualize we're sitting in the council chamber. So, Mr. Waltney?
Only one thing to mention tonight. If you are out and about and have a chance, swing, swing into the parking deck at Soho. The LEDs have been installed, and it looks fantastic down there. So it's a lot brighter. And hopefully that'll solve some of the concerns with the lighting down there. And we don't have to go to drop painting, ceiling. But that's the only, only thing I had. Glad, glad to see all your smiling faces.
Yeah, same to you. Thank you, Mr. Waltney. Mr. Thames?
Just continue to support our local businesses. It is so, so, so important. And I think there's a lot of that going on. But let's keep it up.
All right. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Hickambottom?
I guess I just echo some of the things that have been said previously, in previous meetings, about the appreciation for everyone who's stepping up and doing things for the city of Homewood, from our government to our private sector. And I just, I guess, the only thing I would say is, I really want to encourage people to continue to follow those guidelines that we've been given. I felt, you know, I saw a real shift happening where people were really starting to do that more often in the last couple of days. And it may just be, you know, it's completely anecdotal, but I've seen people who are not. I've seen groups together who are not social distancing, that clearly are not family members, or at least from the way they look, in terms of the ages and the spans. But just keep following those guidelines so that we can turn the corner and flatten the curve on this. And everybody who's out there doing that, just applaud them. I thank them for what they're doing. Because it's, it's not always fun to be locked up in your house, stays on end, and it takes a little discipline. But thank you to everybody who's doing what they need to be doing so that we can try to get through this together.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Hickambottom. And Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Obviously, there are a lot of people making a lot of, a lot of changes to their daily routines. And it's, it's tough. I think it's tough for all of us, that like Brett said, probably especially on, on those businesses in town that, that really rely on that day to day interaction and ability to kinda come in and, and purchase goods and food and everything else. So as mindful as we can be in opening up, you know, and getting out to, to at least restaurants and the shops that are, that are able to be open right now would be great. I feel fortunate to be here, you know, to be here in town and to have the ability to, to use the Lake Shore Trail. So thank you, Mayor, for, for allowing that to continue to, to be, to be, to be a resource for us. And I really just want to thank all the teachers. Right now, it's been obviously a big adjustment for, for everybody in the schools and for all those parents that are, that are home with kiddos now, too. And I think we all realize from having kids at home, how difficult their jobs are on a day to day basis. And just really want to share our appreciation for, for what they do normally and what they're doing now to try and, you know, make the best out of a difficult situation. So.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. Mr. McCluskey?
Thank you, President. Right. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what everybody said about supporting local businesses. We're doing the best we can out there to, to try and help these restaurants and everybody else that are open. So just, just do your best when you can. If you have to order out, pick it up from your car. I think almost 100% of the restaurants here are offering curbside pickup. So just do what you can out there for them. And can't wait to give you guys all a handshake and a hug later on.
Or, or maybe a, you know, a tater or something. So-
Yeah, well, something.
Same to you, Mr. McCluskey. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I feel like all of the news continues to be good. I know the original estimates for Alabama were between 5 and 6,000 deaths. And we're, we're gonna come in way under probably 400, 400 to 500 at the most is what the, the new estimates are. So I'd like to look for us to maybe consider utilizing passive parks and green space available, you know, not necessarily in the next couple of weeks, but at least in three to four weeks, open up some passive parks for people, not necessarily playing around equipment and bathrooms. But we need to utilize our green space. And I just feel like people want to use that. And if we can continue to, to do what we're doing on the Greenway Trail, I think we're gonna be good. And then I have a question for Mr. Kendrick. And the guidance that I'm seeing on, coming from, from Montgomery, is that they're considering moving the election back a year? Is that, is that something that you have any information on?
I think, I think that's-
That's pretty big news.
I think that's a little premature.
Okay, okay. I just want everybody to read what the league is saying about that. They, they are proposing that. So it is something to-
It's gonna be discussed in executive committee meeting next week.
Next week. Okay, okay, okay. So just interesting that, and I didn't know if we'd ever even looked at putting the election back with the other election for Senate. So I don't know. I just-
We don't have any, we don't have any choice. And it's all, it's 100% of the legislature's call.
Got it. Okay.
That state called, code calls it for the last, the fourth Tuesday in the month of August on the years of the election by state code. So we couldn't change that or have any, we can have input into it. But it has to be a legislative back, in my opinion.
Okay.
I think that's what the league's gonna discuss. They would ask the legislature. There is some conversations. The legislature won't go back into session. At the end of April, they'll just adjourn and then have a special session for the budget. But that's still things left to be determined.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate that. Appreciate those questions. And Mrs. Smith?
And I think the Smith family is single handedly trying to keep every restaurant in Homewood up and running because we are ordering out every single night if we can. I'm personally liking it. I just I say, I just don't feel like cooking. But also I have some family members who live out in that Dora Bagley area and they really got hit hard last night. There were some people who lost their homes. There were lots of trees down, cars damaged, that kind of thing. So just, you know, and there are people right here in Homewood who had, you know, pretty extensive flooding and and there were some power line down on Edgewood today that had not been fixed as of about four o'clock this afternoon. So just everybody who was affected by those storms last night, we're already at home. It's hard to be in your house and confined and then not have your power on. So just for all the people who are dealing with the results of those storms last night, thinking about all them.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for running this meeting, this most unusual of meetings. It can't be easy, so we appreciate it. And also just reiterate what everyone else has said. Thank you to everyone who is staying at home. Thank you to those who are not staying at home because they are doing essential functions for us, whether it be the grocery store, the police, the fire and everybody else. We we certainly appreciate what you're doing and continue to support local businesses. I even got GM Marcos last night to or on Saturday to cook on Sunday for Easter. And it was it was fantastic. I highly recommend the getting the lasagna and cooking it off at home. So just continue to support our local businesses.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. And Mrs. Andrews?
Yes, Mrs. Smith, we were one of those who didn't have power until about an hour ago. So thankfully, as one of my neighbors and I were texting each other, it's bad enough to not have power, but for all four of us to be here and the kids trying to elearn and keep trying to work and it was awful. So and you just, you know, just added layer of fun during this global pandemic. I wanted is our Chief Hill and Towne Chief Brandon Broadhead still on the call? I wanted to give a huge shout out to their cohort Lori Stoney. So I am now on the incident command unit for the COVID nineteen response for Jefferson County and I report, I'm just reporting to Ethel Phillips, who is the liaison. So my job is gonna be, y'all hear from me this week, but my job is gonna be to coordinate or to communicate with city councilors and chambers of commerce for all the municipalities in Jefferson County. And so I've been able to sit on the last couple of group phone calls for the entire unit. And our Lori Stoney, our freaking fabulous Lori Stoney is the operations section chief of the entire see this org chart right here? She's in charge of like one fourth of it. I mean, and so I've got to listen to her lay it down on Friday and on Monday. And she's so fabulous and I've always thought she's so fabulous, but now I think even more fabulous is the stuff that she's coordinating and she's working with different fire departments and just the work that they're doing and so professional. And by the way, our own Jim Coker is, of course, Jefferson County EMA. So he is the co-chief along with Dr. Mark Wilson. And so we've got a lot of Homewoodians on the command unit. Ellen Eaton is on there. She's in charge of the special populations. And then Bill Cleveland's on there. So we got Homewood well represented. But Lori, if it was possible for me to think you were even more amazing than you are, please know I'm just can't just can't stand it. You're so incredible. So just thank you and thank her for everything that she's done, so.
That's one heck of a shout out.
She deserves it.
Congratulations to her. Thank you for that, Jennifer. And Mr. Harden?
Well, thank you. I don't know how I can top that from Jennifer. And it's always tough to talk, Jennifer, so I won't try. We also obviously lost power about ten o'clock last night and they told us it wasn't gonna be here till Wednesday night. And I told my wife that Alabama power is just just, they're gonna make themselves look good. They're just hedging their bets. So of course it came on. We, of course, we went and got generated from some friends at Smith Lake, got gasoline, got it all fixed up about two this afternoon. Of course, it comes on at six. But that's great. We're glad to have it. No, not complaining. But I do think people have done a good job on social distancing. I think as time goes on, they're gonna do less and less of that. Much to Mike Chagrin, I think we're gonna see less and less as people are just gonna get tired of it. But clearly things are looking better and so I'm excited about that.
Wonderful. Thank you, all of them. And just a couple of other comments, just to echo what everyone's saying. I really want to make a point to, number one, I want to thank the mayor and Mr. Kendrick for really keeping us informed and on top of the orders that all have sort of come that came down last week, a little bit the week before. And staying on top of that and helping us helping us understand. I know we had a lot of email communications to help us understand what was going on and and for us to inform and communicate with our constituents about that. And so I want to thank them and and Mr. Mayor, I want you to pass out, you know, again, a special thank you to our police and fire that are continuing to go out there. And I can imagine there's many questions and many concerns as as they continue to go about their job. Please thank our street and sanitation workers that are still going out there. And I know there's countless others in our city that are still doing their job, some of it in the face of a lot of uncertainty and concern. And that we're grateful and I know our city is grateful. And and over to social distancing. I was gonna echo y'all's comments. You know, it does appear that we are for the most part, you know, we're all limited to our own little atmosphere that we're operating in, our neighborhoods. Really, it's almost literally our neighborhoods, is it not? Seeing and what we're seeing, and it does appear that we are doing a decent job. The numbers are coming down and that's very encouraging. But I was gonna echo Mr. Hickenbottom's comments that it really is up to us to continue to preach the point of good social distancing, particularly for these next two to three weeks, it seems like. Because that's that's because, you know, I I know how everybody feels. We're all getting a little more comfortable. We're all seeing nice weather. You know, we're seeing numbers improve and it's, you know, it's really now that we just need to set good examples, tell our neighbors, tell our constituents to let's let's keep at this for at least several more weeks and we'll see what all the experts say then. I couldn't agree more. Can't wait for us to get back out there. We'll continue to support these businesses and curbside service. But we know our city is hurting and these businesses are hurting and they're gonna continue to hurt until we can get back out there. And so let's all be safe and let's do what the experts say. And I just want to echo that and hopefully we can, next time we meet, maybe we can have some more encouraging signs and maybe can even point to some some dates down in the future of some some positive changes to happen with loosening up some things. We'll just have to wait and see. So with that, hats off to each of you. Thank you for all your commitment and communications and staying on top of things during these past several weeks and you guys stay at it and look forward to seeing you all in a couple of weeks. No committee meetings. And we'll have our next council meeting two weeks from tonight and it will be virtual again. And everybody wave to Katie. She's on the.
Hi, Katie.
Hi, Katie.
And with that, we'll let Katie wave goodbye. We will see you guys in two weeks. Okay, thank y'all.
Right.
All right, everybody.